It is now six thirty, so we will call the meeting to order of the Primeville City Council on October the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Before we go any farther, I'd like to do a roll call. I see all of you are here. Jason Beebe?
Here.
Janet Hutchinson?
Here.
Tricia Youngman?
Here.
Gail Merritt?
Here.
Jeff Papke?
Here.
And Teresa Rumble?
Here.
And the mayor's present, so please join with me in standing due to be a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Mr. Forrester, are there any additions to the agenda?
No major additions. I think, Steve, you've got a little change on the consent agenda where you're going to separate out the consent, or one special council meeting from the consent agenda. Other than that, no.
Okay, thank you. Yes, for what Steve just said, Mr. Forrester just said, the council briefing for the special meeting on October fifth is not going to be included in this consent agenda. We're going to be addressing only the regular meeting brief, police department property conversion, the liquor license, and the change of ownership on the grocery outlet. So that will be the content of the consent agenda. And of those four items, are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified?
This is Teresa Almika, motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Page to Teresa.
Counselor Beebe, I'll second that.
Counselor Beebe, thank you for seconding that. Again, any questions, concerns? Okay, moving forward, we will do a roll call, approval of that motion. Jason Beebe, how say you?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Papke?
Aye.
Counselor Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. So the consent agenda is approved. Now, the special council meeting brief for October fifth, are there any questions or concerns? I suspect three of you will choose to abstain as you were not present for that meeting. So are there any questions or concerns about the minutes of that meeting? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes from the special council meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Papke. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it. This is Counselor Merritt.
Counselor Merritt, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Again, any questions, concerns? We'll do a roll call. Mr. Beebe?
I'll abstain.
Okay, Counselor Beebe abstains. Counselor Hutchinson?
I'll abstain as well.
Counselor Youngman?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. All right, that leaves just the four of us. Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Papke?
Aye.
Counselor Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. So we are unanimous approval with the extensions of those who are absent from that meeting. So that motion passes as well. We have nothing, no emails received for visitors, appearances, and requests, and we will move on to council business, of which I do not have anything on my agenda, and we'll go to staff reports and requests, and start off with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. From the railroads side, manager Matt Widerhold has informed the city hall, or city, that HENIF, H-E-N-I-F-F, Transportation Systems LLC, formerly Superior Carriers, has renewed their lease at the Primeville Junction for another five years. HENIF Senior VP of Operations, Stephen Lohman, stated in an email to the city, "This location has been a great success thanks to you," meaning Matt, "and the service from the city of Primeville Railroad. We are looking forward to the next five years and continued growth." This operation currently provides central Oregon with seven full-time family wage jobs. So for that, nice work to Matt and his crew, Dan and Chris, and congratulations. That's an anchor tenant out at the Primeville Junction near Terravon. On the airport side, manager Kelly Colfell hosted the Primeville Edco Advisory Committee monthly meeting and lunch yesterday, entered the group, the Edco group, with the new improvements to the Primeville Creek County Airport, and of course, the U.S. Forest Service heli base project. And finally, tonight's kind of a windy, long one, very important, what has happened this last Friday. We did have our Bowman Hydro Project team present Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife with our ask for a fish passage waiver. This has been in the works now for over a couple of years. We finally made it through the Fish Passage Commission, and then on to the ODF Commission this past Friday. Unfortunately, we were denied the waiver on a five no to one yes commission vote. This outcome, in effect, ends our effort to place hydro generation at Bowman Dam, along with the environmental benefits the project included for fish habitat and renewable energy. The Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife threshold requirement, which is in statute, requires for mitigation efforts to be greater than what a fish passage would provide the environment to allow a waiver for passage to be granted. The project is not economically capable of funding a passage solution, and we had hoped that our environmental benefit package would be enough, but it came up short with the ODF and W Commission. On a slightly more positive note, the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife Committee members from both the commission level and the Fish Passage Task Force, as well as some
And spreading gravel at the lot. Removing the old vacant structure paves the way for better traffic plan for Pioneer Alternative High School and of the new Steens Pillar Elementary Adventure Theme School that opened in September. And we appreciate the city's partnership in this project, which will impact our entire community. And in the video, the video meeting last night, I commented that, you know, it really is the collaboration of the community, various entities, rather than the, rather than having silos, we're working together to make good things happen for the community. So with that, does anyone have any?
I'd just like to comment, Mayor, real quick, you know, a shout out to Eric's leadership at Public Works and, and Scott Smith and his, his continued efforts to work collaboratively with the school district and many other local governments here. And, and it's a really truly is a spirit of cooperation. And we've got a lot of neat things done as a community because of Eric's team and his leadership out there and people like Scott Smith, who willing to go out there and do the work, even though it's not positively city-specific, it's community-specific.
It's community.
So, thank you, Scott, and thanks, Eric.
That was, that was duly noted by the school board and administration last night, specifically in regard to Scott Smith and Eric Klon and, and, and the entire team. So, thank you all for the work you did in collaboration with the school district and, and the other entities of the community that we, we worked so well together collaboratively to move things forward. With that, does anyone have any, do any of the council members have any committee reports to report on or committees to report on?
All right, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Papke, I just have a quick follow-up. Couple of weeks ago, I mentioned our last council meeting about our potato digging and our efforts to donate. First, a huge thank you to the community. We had many community members come out, absolutely willing and excited to help, and we harvested close to 10,000 pounds of potatoes. It was the fastest harvest we'd ever had. By 10 o'clock, we were done, which was beautiful. We're usually there at about 3:00 in the afternoon, and so that was fantastic. They were hauled to the valley that following Monday. We actually partnered with some FFA chapters in the Dayton and Willamina area, who took our 1,000-pound bags of potatoes and broke them down into five-pound bags. And they are, have already been consumed and are being distributed to all of those affected by the fires and the first responders. And they'll probably have more than they need, and they're just gonna get them into the food banks in the valley for the people that are gonna be dealing with the fires and the destruction of their property for many months to come. And we're, it was, it was really a fun effort, and appreciate Z21 coming out. And thanks to the county for donating time of their forklifts, so we could use that to pick those monstrous bags up and get them loaded up and get them out of here.
Councilor Papke, thank you very much for your effort in, in, in doing that, moving that project forward. Any other reports? Okay, I have a couple of short things to report on. The annual League of Oregon Cities Conference begins tomorrow morning, and I don't know if any of you are signed up for that. I do plan to attend. And then the Community Renewable Energy Association, CRIA, the board that I serve on, is in the process of, of searching and replacing their retiring executive director. So that's going to be happening in the next, in the next month and a half. Hopefully, we'll have that resolved. And lastly, we had a, an executive session for the League of Oregon Cities today. Some minor changes to the bylaws, but other than that, it was sort of a routine gathering of, of the, of the executive, of the League of Oregon Cities Board of Directors. Are there any issues the council would just like to bring up, just to discuss openly in this time?
This is Councilor Merrick, and we've been talking about the schools, and my hats are off to Jeff Papke and all the educators that are trying to keep our kiddos in school or working online with them. And I don't know if any of you saw the video that was put out by the school district today down at the high school urging all citizens to wear masks so they can stay in school.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor. Personally, I, I want to reiterate the issue about masks, because we're seeing in Europe a significant increase in numbers of people getting sick and ill. And it's up to all of us in our community, and we as representatives of the community, out in the community, need to set an example, so that we can keep this community as healthy as we can and keep businesses alive and afloat, so they are not shut down. Other issues to be brought forward?
Just a, a follow-up, Councilor Merrick, thank you. Saying this is struggling would be an understatement. The rest of us teachers who are not back with kids are highly jealous of Creek County schools, I can tell you that. And I am actually on a committee looking at how do we get a hybrid schedule in Ben Lapine? And I've been calling a lot of people, had a wonderful conversation with our high school principal, Michelle Jonas, today. And it's really awesome for me to call this place home and to see our schools as just another example of leading the way and, and, you know, being that, that tip of that spear, and everybody's looking at how, what they're doing and how they're doing it, and they're doing a great job with it. And so it's just another feather in the cap of the, the community of Bryanville and Creek County, but, but thank you, Councilor Merrick, for your comments, I appreciate that.
And thank you, Councilor Papke. Any other comments, move forward? Okay, hearing none, let's move on, there are no ordinances. We have resolution number 1460, authorizing the sale of real property. Mr. Klon, would you like to lead this?
PowerPoint that James will be bringing up, and I apologize if some of you have seen this multiple times, but I think this might be the first time that we're all together discussing this opportunity. So, we've spoke about this opportunity three times now. We spoke about it in executive session, we held a public hearing last week on it, and this will be our third night of the conversation. So, briefly, and once again, I apologize if you've seen this multiple times, but if, if you have any questions, please stop me. The city was able to purchase the land from Berks Resources, we call that the Barnsbury property, in 2017, so 461 acres. When we combine that with 160 acres of BLM, that's where we come up with the 620 acres of open space. That included 305 acres of water rights for a grand total of 1.2 million. And the drivers on that, on that purchase was, obviously, the water rights, they were worth essentially the entire amount, the land was free. The Combs Flat extension, that's our number one street project, where we'd like to extend Combs Flat up to Peters and then open space. That piece of property is beautiful, and it's used each and every day, and I'm very happy that we're able to acquire it. Next slide, please. So, the design of Combs Flat is underway. That's our, as I mentioned, our number one street project, that would include piping the canal for safety. We're hopeful that there may be some stimulus funds that would help us with the construction of that road. And we realize that when we construct that road, we may strand property, basically, that property would be on the residential side of the road, rather than the open space. And this is something that we considered during our master plan. So, moving forward. The master plan, if not for COVID, this would have come to council, Casey will be bringing it to council soon. This is just the title of it, the echo over the view, moving forward. This is some of the main features that came out of this master planning process, which included the public, the tribes, a lot of different agencies. You'll see that the Combs Flat extension was contemplated in this, in the, the master plan for the site. So, next slide. This slide showed that there may be some areas that would be better served for residential, and that would be the blue hashed areas that we're talking about currently. Next slide, please. So with that said, once the canal is moved, some of the land will be available for development. And even prior to the canal being moved, some would be available for residential development. So what we're going to talk about today is the property owned by the city. So that would be the blue area and then the peach area. Next slide, please. We have a local developer interested in this property, and they are offering us approximately $13,500 per lot. In our public hearing, we heard from our Realtor of record that said, you know, a fair price would be approximately $10,000 per lot, so this is a very fair price. They're very interested in that blue area currently, which would be the land west of the canal that would be available currently. That's 7.79 acres, that would, they think they could get 37 lots there, so that would be 500,000. And then in our sales agreement with them, they would also be purchasing that land in the peach, once the canal is moved. That would be, you know, estimated maybe about 63 more lots, so this sale would be generating one, approximately 1.35 million. With that said, this is per lot price, and so as that neighborhood is laid out, we'll understand exactly how many lots are in there. But with that said, legal counsel Jared Reed developed a sales agreement with them that protects us, and we have minimum values that we will receive from that. So, moving forward. So, summary, if we, you know, if we were to sell this property, 600 acres would remain, the 305 acres would remain. We purchased all of that land in 2017 for 1.2 million, and essentially, today, we would be selling 21 acres for up to 1.35 million. This resolution, resolution contemplates that and would allow the mayor to sign the sales agreement. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We held the, the public hearing on this and received no comments, and I did not believe we've received any written comments.
Any questions from the council?
Eric, I have one. This is Councilor Hutchinson. So, the blue and the peach, you're obligating both of those at this time?
We are.
Or you're obligating the blue?
No, we would, this would be obligating both of those, Councilmember Hutchinson. The blue would be available currently, the peach would be available in the future, but this dictates the price of both of those, and the sales agreement would be for both of those. We would hate to have to try to renegotiate after half of the property was sold. We felt like this was the best way to protect the city.
And how long before they'd be able to utilize the peach-colored lot?
It would be once, yeah, so that would be once the canal's moved. Right now, we're working with Ochko Irrigation District on the design of that canal piping. They're working on grants, and we're hopeful that that would happen in the fall of, I believe it is '22, but Mr. Forrester may be able to give us some more.
That's a tentative, yeah, tentative schedule with the PL-566 was in, that would be what we'd be hopeful for.
And Eric, please correct me if I'm, if I'm speaking out of turn, but it's my understanding that because the canal redesign is not finalized, there is difficulty in determining exactly how many lots there can be, and therefore, that's why you're using the lot price with a guaranteed minimum for the total sale, as, as the agreement is structured, is that correct?
That's correct, and then also, the, the group is not interested in putting a lot of funds into the engineering and design, you know, until we get to this stage. So, that is a correct statement.
Are there any additional questions regarding resolution number 1460? I'd like to thank Eric and Josh for their work in putting this package together, and Mr. Forrester in working with our, our Realtor of record for this process. So, thank you all. With that, is there a motion to approve resolution 1460?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Papke, I move to approve resolution 1460, a re, a resolution authorizing the sale of real property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Papke, is there a second?
This is Teresa, I'll make a second on that.
Thank you, Councilor Rumble. We have a motion with a second. Are, are there any questions or concerns moving forward?
So, this is Councilor Hutchinson. Eric, I just want to thank you for explaining in more detail about the lots and that, that helped a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this has been a, it's been a long project, but I think, you know, wonderful. We've recouped all of our money by only selling 21 acres, which is pretty amazing.
I agree.
Any other questions or concerns, comments? All right, we have a motion seconded in place. We'll go to a vote. Councilor Beebe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councilor Youngman?
Aye.
Councilor Merrick?
Aye.
Councilor Papke?
Aye.
Councilor Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well for unanimous vote. Thank you all. We'll move on to resolution number 1461, a resolution exercising the power of eminent domain. And with that, Mr. Reed and Josh Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jared Reed, City Attorney. I believe that there is a map that can be shown for the, for the presentation. James, do you have that? Perfect, thank you. Council, maybe remember, a number of months ago, I think it was the beginning of this year, we had presented two out of three properties within the city for eminent domain. These were three cities that were identified, or sorry, three properties that were identified by city staff that were unowned properties. The property, in essence, in researching these properties, it's basically determined that they were part of the old riverbed, and basically, the old surveys were from that old riverbed, and then when the riverbed moved or shifted, there was property that was no longer owned by anybody. This particular property was identified, again, back at that time, but we didn't move forward with eminent domain at that point, because we wanted to do additional research regarding the adjoining property owners. The property owner to the east in particular is, that property is just sold, so we were able to speak with that new property owner and determine whether it was in our interest to move forward with eminent domain on this particular parcel. And first and foremost, it, it gives the city a great amount of public benefit to own this property, in particular, for, for have control over this property, mainly for flood control and management of Ochko Creek. And I'll let Mr. Smith speak about that here in a minute, to really articulate on why that gives us such a benefit. By moving forward with eminent domain, we would be able to take control of the parcel and then work cooperatively with the property owner to the east in regards to the usage of that property, so that we can maintain, again, control regarding flood management. And then I'll let Mr. Smith supplement the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Jared. So as Jared said, the primary purpose of picking up this property is for, for flood control. The entire property is zoned within the floodway, so it's, it's an unbuildable section of our floodplain. It's not supposed to be built on. My opinion, if we have an opportunity to pick these properties up, we should, to preserve that floodway. And it's also almost entirely within our 50-foot setback of the creek, so it's, it's also in the best interest of just controlling that development, so we don't have a, a constant enforcement action. As you can see in the image, the person does use that and has used that as their sideyard for many years. And that's something we can work towards, we've already talked to the owner about, but primarily, our interest at this point is just to, to get the property in our control, and then we can work, work from there. Are there any questions on, from the council on those points?
Josh, this is Councilor Hutchinson. What's the blue thing?
It's a pool or a trampoline, I can't tell.
Oh, okay, all right, thanks.
It's no longer there, though.
Oh, it isn't?
No.
It's one of those blow-up things, I think, yeah.
Oh, okay, thanks.
I think that's an older image. You'll see the tree is not fallen either.
Yes, there's a massive tree falling on the ground across the southern part of this property right now.
So, for clarification, the, as we look at the picture, the, I guess, farthest east line, that's actually, that's the true lot line for the house in the picture, correct?
Correct. This whole property at one point was owned by the, the house further to the east, the Parker property, and at that time, it was all one tax lot. This unknown lot was actually discovered when they partitioned off that house. And, and it was just left off. That was back in 2006.
So, it looks to me like that yellow line is awful close to that house.
It's, it's, it's meeting the, well, at the set of time, there was a five-foot set, well, still a five-foot setback. So, it, the, the property lines, when you look at these pictures, aren't perfect. You can see the fence lines are slightly off. Things do need to shift, so it's, when the house was built, the property line was where, was correct. So it should be about a five-foot setback.
And in addition, if we are to gain control of the property, we would also have some flexibility in regards to the lot itself. So, for instance, one thing that has been discussed is perhaps the boundary line adjustment or conservation-type easements within those two lots, to make them, you know, again, to, to solidify our control of the creek, which is really what we're much, much more concerned about than the gentleman's home. So, those sort of options would be on the table if we were to actually own the lot.
Correct.
So, we, we could do some type of a lot line adjustment. I would assume we're not really concerned to, to control and do something all the way up to the, that property line, are we?
No, our intention wouldn't really be to do anything with the property unless we had some type of flood mitigation or restoration of the creek-type project that might come into play. Otherwise, we, we would just leave it alone. And it, for the primary purpose of controlling, that nothing does get developed there that can be flooded. His, you know, if he wants to continue to use it as a yard, that might be something we have to work out with the new owner. He's well aware that he doesn't own it at this time.
And we're not, we're not intending to go out and all of a sudden put up fence post in the ground says our property's still out.
Correct, yeah, that was one of the reasons we didn't go after it last time, is just thinking through how that would play, because currently, you can see the fence, it's clear over about 25 feet off the, off the creek.
Does it create any sort of a maintenance requirement issue on behalf of the city in taking this property?
That's some of the negotiation we'd have to have with the owner. I mean, the most it would be is mowing, which we do on a lot of our properties. Clearly, he's doing it already and has been. In my personal opinion, we would just continue to let that occur, and that would be part of this easement or deed restriction that we would place on the property.
Ideally, the city's interest in the property is really control of the, of the creek, as well as the flood mitigation portion of it. So, it really, it, it, you know, it becomes, in essence, a two-step process, where the second step isn't really well-defined right now. And the reason for that is that there's a lot of different options you can go with, but the first option is, is quite simple, and that is getting control of the lot itself. And since there isn't an actual owner of the property, and the property owner to the east claim on the property is murky at best, then this is a pretty low-risk way for the city to gain control over that creek, creek bank, without having any sort of adverse taking or any sort of liability associated with it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding this property?
This is, yeah. This is Councilor Hutchinson, I have one more question. Who, who owns the property to, like, the northwest, where you, you know, the, the point on the northeast is right on that black line thing? Who owns that little bit of a sliver right there?
So, Councilwoman, is it, are you talking about the nor, the northwest?
Yes.
Everything on the other side of the creek is parks.
Is where the trees are, is that where the cricket, there's still a little open space in the middle of the, in the middle of that, I guess if you call it the northern boundary, that looks like it's a flat area outside of the yellow?
It's right in there?
Yes.
So, that's a Ridenhour property to the north, it's a much larger piece of property that goes to the north. The boundary lines are, are strange in here, but...
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very large parcel that goes all the way up to Seahill.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Further questions? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve resolution number 1461?
I'll move to approve resolution number 1461.
Thank you, Councilor Beebe, is there a second?
This is, I'll, I'll make a motion, this, yeah, number, I'll do it.
Councilor Youngman, Youngman.
Councilor Youngman, a second, thank you very much, Patricia. Going further, are there any other questions or concerns before the vote? Okay, with that, Councilor Beebe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilor Merrick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilor Papke?
Aye.
And Councilor Rumble?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. We have a unanimous rule of resolution number 1461. And with that, we have reached the end of the agenda. Are there any last comments before we call for adjournment? Pretty quiet out there, is a motion to adjourn.
This is Teresa, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Teresa, is there a second?
This is Janet, I'll second.
Okay, I'm going to call for a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned, thank you all.